I'd like to call to order the 289th Annual Town Meeting. Welcome and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. My name is Bill Ty, the Town Moderator. I'd like to introduce the people that are up at the front of the room. We'll start with the Select Board. And Martin Mitsoff on the left, Renee Wood, and then we have Bob Kilmer not sitting in order. We have Rhonda Lombard Bard, our Town Council, and we have Finance Committee member Nadine Holver up front, Dave Macy, Julie Hannum, and Ken Smith. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our first responders, firemen and police officers who were in attendance tonight. Let's give them a round of applause. Our method of voting for tonight, I hope, is a little bit easier than we had at the special town meeting. As you came in tonight, registered voters of the Town of Sheffield were given an electronic device and a colored piece of paper, salmon, I believe it is. We will be using the electronic devices as our main means of voting. The colored piece of paper will be used as backup if needed. And I would like now to talk to, ask Martin Mitsoff to go over the operation of the electronic devices.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So you all have the electronic devices, and you'll note that on the keypad it's numeric 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 0. Tonight, we're going to be voting with keys 1 through 3, so 1, 2, and 3. And just to refresh everyone's memory about how this works, we're going to do two sample questions. So the first sample question has to do with a Pink Panther movie in which Inspector Clouseau is at a hotel desk, and there's a woman standing next to him, and there's also a dog standing next to him. And so he asks the question, "Does your dog bite?" So sample question number one is, "Does your dog bite?" And I'm going to open polling in just a minute. You have 15 seconds in which to answer the question. So 1 equals yes, 2 equals no, 3 is, "I don't know." Polling is open. Does anyone not understand what to do?
Time's up.
Okay, so I'm going to close polling. So 41% of respondents said yes, and that's the woman speaking, "Yes, my dog bites." Okay? So 29% said no, and 30% said, "I don't know." So the second question is the more important question. So Inspector Clouseau bends down to pet the dog, and of course, it bites him. And he stands back up and says, "I thought you said your dog doesn't bite." What does the woman say in response? One, "It's not my dog." Two, "Sorry about that." Or number three, "Oh, well." So I'm going to open polling. Polling is open.
Time's up.
Okay, we're still getting a few responses. Some people probably don't want to answer the question. That's okay. I am going to close polling. Hey, 66%, "It's not my dog." Excellent, thank you all. And then that concludes the testing. Everybody seems to know how to work the clickers, and we're good to go. So I'm going to now switch over to the articles for tonight's meeting.
Okay, please do not lose that colored piece of paper that you were given just in case there's an issue with the electronic voting process that cannot be readily resolved. And individuals wishing to address the meeting are encouraged to pre-read the warrant and plan ahead for when their article of interest is going to be presented. All speakers are to address the audience using the microphone set up in the main auditorium here. Once set the microphone, please show the colored piece of paper that you were given and state your name and address. You will only need to identify yourself the first time you address the meeting. All speakers are being asked to keep their remarks to five minutes or less, and if you are still speaking at the four-and-a-half-minute mark, you will be given a reminder that you have 30 seconds left. The number of times that an individual can address the meeting on the same topic will be up to the discretion of the moderator. If an individual wants to use the motion to move or call a question, he or she shall follow the process previously mentioned on how to address the meeting. Shouts to move the question from the audience will not be recognized. A motion to move the question requires a second and two-thirds vote, and is not debatable. Voters up front will be allowed to address the meeting as citizens. All speakers who address this meeting are asked to keep their remarks positive. Remarks of a personal nature directed at anyone in attendance will not be tolerated. Restrooms, just in case, are located outside the main cafeteria. And now, do I have a motion to dispense with the Town Clerk reading the warrant? Do I have a second? No? Can we vote, or...
Well, this is going to have to be a hand vote.
Okay, we'll do this in a hand vote. Who has the, please raise up their salmon-colored papers, all in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous, all right. Okay, tonight, we have 31 articles on our warrant. Okay, let's begin with Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, may I interject for just one minute?
Yes.
So every one of the articles, all 31 of them, number one is to approve, number two is to disapprove, and number three is to abstain. So we won't change that order of answers on your keypad, 1, 2, and 3, for all 31 articles.
Very good.
Thank you.
Before we start, any questions on the voting? Just to make sure we're good. Okay, very good. Article number one, "To see if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as listed below, and as may be amended necessary to defray the expenses of the Town for fiscal year 2023, or take any other action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $3,864,946 for the purpose of funding those budgets listed in the warrant necessary to defray the expenses of the Town for fiscal year 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Mr. Moderator, move to amend, Kathryn Miller, 801 Clayton Road. I move to amend Article 1 to add the sum of $28,182 to the fiscal year 2023 budget, library budget, for the purpose of funding a full-time children's program coordinator position.
We have a second. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Counsel, are we going in the right direction? Okay. Any discussion? Yes, leading.
Mr. Moderator, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee approved the budget that is presented before you and recommended approval at tonight's meeting, and I do not recommend we take any additional action on this particular item. It was discussed at the Selectman's level and again at the Finance Committee level.
Yes.
Pat Levine, 261 East Main Street. I'd like to, I'd like to speak in favor of this amendment. The Library has requested multiple times at the Finance Committee and the Select Board to fund this extremely important position that supports the families in our community and deserve the kind of programming and support that we're able to provide them with this full-time position. It is now and has been for many years only part-time, and it is inadequate to serve this Town.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I would just like to bring to the Town's attention that a full-time individual does not cost just $28,000 and change. It would be an entire benefit package, which would bring the entire cost somewhere in the area of $65,000 to $75,000.
Martin Mitsoff, South Undermountain Road. Lou?
My name is Louis Levine. I'm at 261 East Main Street.
Okay, just...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Louis Levine. I'm 261 East Main Street. Can I just process what was just told to us? That a $28,000 salary would bring the total cost to two-and-a-half times that salary? Does that mean that the salary packages, that the benefit packages in the Town cost us 150% more than the salaries? I just find that astounding.
Mr. Moderator, I believe I can answer that question.
Okay.
Okay. So the $28,182 is comprised of an increase in the part-time children program coordinator wage of $13,850 plus an estimated full-time benefits package at 45% of the base salary. That's a number that I've raised with the Finance Committee in the past, as well as with the Select Board, as well as with the Town Administrator. 40% is a very conservative figure, meaning it's probably going to be less than that for the full-time package. So the $28,182 incorporates all of this for making the children's program coordinator full-time. Secondly, based upon the average assessed value of $319,200 for all, for the average home in Sheffield, this would increase the budget as proposed by four cents per mil, which equates to $12.77 for the average homeowner in Sheffield to make an important position full-time and offer the benefits that we've seen, that many of you have seen with children. We've got a lot of new children in Town. You've seen with the children's program coordinator and our incredible library staff and director. So there we are.
I'd like to say also that the Library is probably one of the most important resources we have in this Town. The other fact is that if one walks and walks through Ashley Falls and sees the number of young kids that have come into the community, it's extraordinary. And the fact that our school enrollment this year has not declined suggests that we have more kids coming into Town, and many of them are in Ashley Falls, and many of them will use the Library resources. And so I think it's a good investment in our community.
Mr. Moderator? Yes, hold on, Rob?
Bob Kilmer, 1272 Randapaw Road, Ashley Falls. I do believe the children's coordinator position is an important one that we will address, but there was a substantial increase to the budget, to the library budget, and I feel that this year, if we made a full increase with all asks, it would have been too much. So I refrained from going that far. But I do believe it's something that we should be looking at and possibly in the future, but I don't believe we should approve it tonight.
Mr. Moderator, Bruce Filbrick from Cobble Lane. One of the items on Article 1 is Memorial Day, $1,200. What does this pay for, and who receives the $1,200?
We're on, we're on the amendment right now, so we can't talk about that. After, you can come back.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Moderator, I call the question.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So the process? Process now, we need to vote on the amendment by hand with the salmon-colored paper, and we just need a majority to pass. So, everybody ready? All in favor? Okay, all opposed? Amendment has passed by majority.
That was calling a question.
That was calling a question?
Right.
Now we vote on the amendment, okay? I'm sorry, we're calling a question. That's why we have counsel here. Okay, now we vote on the amendment. With the colored piece of paper? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Motion passed, or amendment passed. Okay, now we have to vote on Article 1. Or discussion.
David Pawl, Laurel Lane, Sheffield. In the Sheffield Times special issue that came out in April, the, in terms of the highlights, as I read, it said, "The Town is seeing increases in costs the same way businesses and families are. In addition, the Select Board approved several salary increases at its February 11th meeting." As I contributed to the Sheffield Times, I pretty much read it cover to cover, and I read in the last issue that was published that I received, which happened to be the March-April edition of the Times, the Select Board minutes only went up from December 16th to January 21. So the specific increases as indicated in relation to what we should see prior to voting on this should have been accessible in the Times. The particular problem is, is that I would have to do a lot of research in relation to comparing, going down to the Town, seeing what the new salaries are, making my own percentage increases. We really don't have any idea as far as what these specific increases are in relation to salaries for these particular positions. And you know, that's not, that's not the way the school system operates. You pretty much know what those are. So that is my concern, complaint, comment.
Sir, you wanted to talk?
Thank you. Again, my name is Bruce Filbrick, Cobble Lane here in Sheffield, and one item listed on Article 1 is Memorial Day, and the appropriation in the warrant is $1,200. I am asking what that $1,200 is spent for and who receives that fund?
In the past, those funds have been used to transport the band to the parade back and forth.
So that money isn't given to the American Legion or the veterans?
It is not, no.
Okay. Then there's another one, care of soldiers' graves, $1,400. What does that cover and who receives that money?
They have gone to the cemetery, the Ashley Falls Cemetery, and the Center Cemetery, I believe, are the ones who submit money for markers on the graves.
Then the DPW pays for that, or private contractors receive the funds?
No, the cemeteries get the funds. They're paid directly to the cemeteries.
Okay. Could in the future both of those items, Memorial Day and care of soldiers' graves, be listed as such so that when people read those items, they don't think the money perhaps is received by the American Legion?
Certainly, we could change how they're listed, a title.
Thank you.
Now, Dave, you looking for a response? No? Okay, all right, do we have some? Okay.
I wanted to address your question. Part of the issue on the Sheffield Times is not that the Select Board is trying to be negligent in publishing its minutes. Most of what has to be to the Sheffield Times to be published in March, they request that it be in by the 15th of the previous month. So we're looking at February 15th, and I really don't know if the editor goes back to the Town's webpage for the minutes, but we are prepared to discuss a number of the salaries. So why don't you let us do that first, okay?
Well, a sheet could be printed with regard to what the 21 salaries are, what the 22 is, which would be easy to figure out a percentage. At this particular point in time, we don't know. I know that in terms of what's been mentioned as far as the reading with the special issue, there's substantial amounts with respect to increases that have been suggested. And so I want to know if it's salaries, I want to know what it is. And to see the salaries, then I would be able to make a determination. At this particular point in time, I can't.
Okay. Before I turn this over to our Town Administrator to discuss specific salaries, I do also want to let you know that what you're reading in the Sheffield Times is their editorial. The Town provides the warrant article, but it is the Sheffield Times staff that puts together that introduction, and they did not contact the Town, although I'm trying to put any blame here, but they did not contact the Town for what was substantial increases, as they called it. Part of the issue that anyone who hires anyone knows is that there's nobody out there to hire. And we felt this year, that is the Selectmen who make these salary increases, so it sits with the three of us, Bob, Martin, and myself. We felt that a number of our employees, we have lost employees to other towns who pay them higher salaries. We've lost a fair number of our police department to towns who pay higher salaries. So we felt that we needed to make some adjustments, or we ran the potential of losing more people. Municipal work is not like public, going out into the public and doing a job. It has its own skill sets. So now let me turn this over to Rhonda, and she'll go over some of the specific increases.
So I can tell you that most of the increases fell between 3 and someone as high as 16%. Do you have individual salaries? I don't have the percentages. Most of them were probably around 5%, maybe a little bit more. I can tell you what the salaries were and what they are for everyone or anyone. I just don't have the percentages calculated.
I'm only suggesting that this not happen again, that we be made aware as far as the increases that are being adjusted, either a piece of paper out there with the listing and so on, percentage of increase. When you say 3 to 16%, when I see 16%, I say to myself, "Hm, that seems to be a little bit high." Okay? When I ask for a percentage of increases for my business for where I'm working, I have a hard job getting more than 2% with regard to salary increases. So I think when you, when you're saying average 5, somewhere between 3 and 16, that's just a little, you know, it's a little uncomfortable for me to be able to say, "Oh, okay, thank you."
Okay.
And I don't mean to be contrary about this, but I think it's an important...
Okay.
I would also like to add that part of the reason why we increased salaries as we did is because we cannot attract any new hires for what we can offer at the starting salaries. So we did have to increase, or we start hiring right off the street for more than some of our dedicated employees. And the substantial increase to the Library was for wages. And that is because they were underpaid. And if you want to look into it farther, you will see that most of these wage increases were for people that were underpaid.
Every organization, I'm not talking about whether it's the Town or wherever it is, has written specifics in relation to who's going to be hired, in relation to what price above what the workers are currently working. And look at all of the information pertaining to years of experience, what their past jobs are and so on, and you have to go with that. If they don't want to take it, there's somebody out there who will. So it just didn't come off the cuff with regard to what you're going to pay somebody. You have to have rules and regulations, just like the teachers do. Okay? You get somebody with years of experience, but there's a minimum amount that has to be paid, and the same would be true, I would say, of Town employees. Thank you.
All right. I think we got the point there, Dave, so...
So what we're going to do to clarify this, and I personally do apologize as Chair of the Select Board that we do not have that information for you tonight, in the back of the Town Report that you picked up with the cute little bird on it, you will find a listing of everyone's salary for the last calendar year. But by Friday of this week, on the Town's website, under News, we will have a listing of every employee's salary, what it was prior to this increase, how much they received both as a dollar amount and as a percentage, and their total compensation wage-wise at this point. Okay? And we will not make this mistake again.
Okay, Marie.
Marie Messini Reynolds, 115 Pike Road West. I actually have a question for Nadine. As we're looking at these various amounts in here, I'm assuming when you have the police department line there, that's primarily wages. Does that reflect the benefits that you're talking about?
No, that, excuse me, that's the entire police department budget, not just wages, but the benefits. Rhonda, what category? Insurance and bonding is where, is that where that's coming from, Rhonda?
It's coming from...
Oh, group health insurance underneath it. I'm sorry. So if you look at the bottom of the second column, the third, fourth item from the bottom is group health and insurance.
Okay. So I use the police department as an example, same with the highway department. There, the heads of those departments are in there. In the Selectman's office, in that budget line, is that, does that reflect the Town Administrator and staff, or what does that reflect?
Yes, as the Town Administrator and the staff and the Selectman's salary are all included in that budget, along with, I believe, school committee stipends are also in there.
Okay, thank you.
Julie.
Julie Hannam, 765 Holm Road, Member of the Finance Committee. One additional point that I want to make to David Pawl's concerns about salary changes, totally agree that we need more transparency and put those changes out there, but one of the major items that we're looking at in terms of the hiring is the succession planning. As we look toward 2 to 5 to 7 years out, if we don't start raising salaries now, there literally will be zero applicants in the future. So that, I just want to mention that point about succession planning in the salaries. That wasn't really clear with other comments. Thank you.
I would like to let you know that the Selectmen took no increase this year. Our stipends have, our salaries have remained the same. We receive no benefits. I think this is the second or third year in a row where that has been the case.
Okay, yes.
Sorry, Hoy, 60 Main Street. I'm glad that you mentioned that, Julie, because I agree that we need, we need more transparency. I am totally for increase in salaries in full-time positions, which have benefits associated with them for people who work and live in Sheffield. But when it comes to voting on this, it's very hard when you look at Article 1 in its, just in itself. What was it before? What's the increase in each section? That's not necessarily going to make me vote against it, I just want to know. And I think that's what people are saying here tonight, and I think that we need to see a little bit more specifics. Lumping everything together in the Selectman's office makes it difficult to really understand what we're paying for.
All right, yes, Julie.
Julie Hannam, again, I just want to add two points, and absolutely, I want to invite anyone and everyone to any posted meetings of the Finance Committee where you would see all of the details of all of the budgets, and I'm sure those would be available from the Town Administrator if someone wanted to actually look at the line-by-line-by-line budget. But I did want to add one piece of levity. The biggest salary increase is our moderator, who got 50%... The biggest salary increase is our moderator who got 50% from $200 to $300. Just a piece of levity on a very serious subject.
Thank you.
I will commit to everyone who's here that beginning next year, we will put the budget on the website from the first day that it goes to the finance committee. And every iteration, an update will be on the town website for people to view. Also, to possibly head off the feeling that we're not being transparent, we will look at holding a, like we have done in the past, and they were not very well attended, so we dropped them. But we will hold a meeting on a Monday evening or so, prior to town meeting, where any and all questions on every single warrant item and budget, we will be there, the finance committee, the select board, and our town administrator to answer questions. And if you have other suggestions on how to increase transparency and be able to get you the answers that you want, please let us know.
Any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? We're ready to vote. All right, so, take your electronic devices. One is approved, two is disapproved, three is abstained. Fifteen seconds. And the results are. Eighty percent approve. Motion passes by majority. All right, 30 more articles.
I'm sorry, I just have one question for Martin on how the clicker works. If you press something accidentally, which I didn't do, but just in case I do.
That's a great question, Sari. So, in the 15-second time that polls are open, if you pressed one and you meant to press two, you can change your vote. You can change your vote anytime from yes, no, abstain, yes, no, abstain, whatever. You can change it up until the time that polling's closed. Once it's closed, it's closed. That's the vote.
So, you just press the button and you won't...
You press the button, yeah. If you pressed one and you meant to press two, just press two. And if you pressed two and you meant to press one, just press one. Anytime in that, as polls are open, you can change your vote. But it, when the moderator calls closed, it's closed.
All right. Article two. Deceive the town will vote to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 2023 as required by Chapter 41, Section 108, Chapter 71, Section 52 of the general laws. Moderator, $300. Selectmen, chairman, $2,773. Selectmen, two members at $2,401 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District Committee, four members at $500 each, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 2023 as required by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the general laws. Moderator, 300. Selectmen, chair, $2,773. Selectmen, two members at $2,401 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, four members at $400 each.
Second.
Oh, 500, sorry.
And we have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know, is not the planning board elected officials?
Who are you, George?
I'm Jordan Olain. George Olain Foleyro.
Okay. Very good.
Are not, are not the planning board members elected officials of the town?
Yes, they are elected officials. Your request for a stipend this year was, I think this is probably something the finance committee should be taking up since they set the budget for your approval or disapproval. I know from the select board's point of view, it was felt that a stipend was not warranted in the purpose that there are a number of other boards who are actually not elected, but appointed. And if everyone starts getting a stipend, where does it stop? So, this matter was taken up by the select board. It was not approved, and possibly the chair of the finance committee would like to further address this.
The finance committee reviewed what the selectmen's recommendation was, and we supported the select board's decision.
If the, if the planning board are elected officials, but can't get a stipend for all the hours that they spend during the week and on the bylaws and at the meetings and hearings and what have you, why should the other boards get a stipend?
The only board currently that gets a stipend is the, well, Bill here being moderator, he's elected. The school committees, that money is paying for their transportation. And your selectmen are receiving under $3,000 for the chair and two members at 2,500. That's the way it's been. Possibly you want to do a citizen's petition, but why does not the planning board deserve a stipend? And then not the Board of Health? And then not the Conservation Commission? And then there is the Historical Commission? And then, just look in your book and you can see all the committees. So, the selectmen discussed this. If you want to argue it, possibly this is not the place to do it, but maybe it is.
We're just talking about elected officials. We're not talking about the appointed ones. We're just talking about the elected ones.
All right.
I'd like to comment if I could.
Okay.
It's not about being elected or not elected officials, being appointed or elected. Every citizen in this town that sits on a board or a committee is pretty much a volunteer. And adding a small stipend to the planning board is not doing anything that's going to be incredibly positive. And in fact, I would give up my stipend as a selectman before I would give any stipends to any other boards.
So, approved.
Not a problem. I feel we are all volunteers. And this just opens up a door, because if we start giving stipends out like that, then every committee, board that we have deserves one. Plain and simple.
All right. I think there's a process if we wanted to challenge that, so we'll follow that. Any, any other discussion? All right, it's time to vote. One approved, two disapproved, three abstained. Begin.
Hold on. I lost my cursor.
Okay, 74% approve. Motion passes by majority. Article three. Deceive the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal year 2023, and vote to raise and appropriate $7,512,518 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal year 2023, and to vote to raise and appropriate $7,512,518 for the town's assessed share of that budget.
Second.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I would like to bring to voters' attention that we are paying in this district for two buses each year. One of them is actually called a school choice bus that costs $107,000 a year. Our share of that is 52.8%. So, it's a fair amount of money. This bus stops at Price Chopper and makes stops at the Marketplace Restaurant in Great Barrington, Hillside Avenue, Walgreens, the Chamber of Commerce Building, and Big Y before it proceeds to the Southern Berkshire Regional School District campus. This is bringing choice in students from wherever they're choicing in, as long as they get to one of those stops in Great Barrington. Talking with the contractor, it's Greg Messini's bus company, it is the school district who labels these buses and put out the bid. That bid has as many as usually 35 students on it, 15 to 20 ride it in the morning, it could have up to 35 in the afternoon. Dedicated riders are about 15 students. I bring this to your attention because apparently this expense has been going on for years and years, and no one has brought it to our voters' attention. We receive $5,400 a year for choice in students. If we count the 35 students who ride it, then we are spending about well over $3,500 to bring those students into our school, which doesn't leave very much room from the $5,400 that we receive. There's a second bus that is also on the schedule, again labeled by the school district, that is called the activity bus. It runs only in the afternoon. This is from New Marlboro. Anyone in Sheffield, Egremont, whatever, who, the school district, who wants to send their children to New Marlboro, that is their right, and they take them over there in the morning. Somehow, they get them to school. But in the afternoon, this bus runs, and it's $75,000 per year. So, we're up to about $180,000, of which 52.8% is Sheffield. This bus stops at, from New Marlboro. It stops at Our Lady of the Valley, no activities there. It goes to Undermountain and Mount Everett, lets kids off, I'm not sure what they do, but I've been told by the bus company that there are parents to pick them up. And then it goes to Great Barrington. It stops at Big Y, it stops at Mason Library, and it stops at Berkshire South Community Center. Now, this is very late in the game to be bringing this up, and I have to tell you that I have known about this for about a week. But I wonder, when do we stop? We just spent $23,000 on the children's librarian. We just had a very spirited, and rightfully so, discussion on not enough transparency in our budget. And I'm wondering, why are we spending $182,000, 50%, 90% is your tax money? Why are we spending this? So, what are the consequences if we say no? If we veto this budget tonight, which I am making a motion to not approve Article three, then we'll have to have one other town do it, do the same, and this budget will go back to the school committee. We've done this many years, at times, not, not with a lot of happiness. But they have the right then to bring back the budget to us. They can bring it back every so many days. If it goes to December and the five towns have not approved a budget, they go on a 1/12 budget. The, at least in my history, the number of times that the school budget has come back for a revote is three. The school body, the school district, has the right to change any routes at their discretion up until the time that the routes are set for school. This will affect no children this year. This will start to affect children if this is not adjusted, should this body vote to ask to have it adjusted, by the time school starts. So, while we're concerned about dollars, I would ask you to think of $90,000 a year. That is nine tenths of the budget allocation that you will see later on for our fire truck stabilization.
You got to wrap this up.
It is over half, just one moment, please. It's over half of what we are going to pay for our new fire truck, and this is almost a quarter of what we receive in Chapter 90 funds to, to fix the roads. So, I make a motion that we vote no on Article three, and I hope that someone would second it, and also vote yes.
Marcia Broley, 345 Miller Avenue. I wish you would speak without the mask. I missed most of what you said.
Thank you, Marcia. Is there a second?
Mrs. Wood, you know, you're leveraging, leveraging your position as the chairman of the selectmen to bring this forth now. There's been ample opportunity with all of the school committee meetings, when they've talked about the budget, to be able to discuss this particular concern that you have with regard to the committee and the superintendent at that particular point in time. There are good reasons as to why, the bus company is the one who is, is actually setting the price in terms of what the costs are for bringing these students to the various locations. And there's, school choice for our small, little school district here in the southwest corner of the state, it's very difficult. That was proposed by legislators. We cannot get school choice students from New York. We can't get them from Connecticut. We can only get them from the east, which is Great Barrington, which is a very good school district in itself. And we have tried all kinds of different ways in order to get them. We are very fortunate to have 35 students coming. That particular amount of money of $5,400 was set by the state. It was not set by the school districts, and it's the same for every school district within Massachusetts, 5,400. It's not an ample amount. I agree it needs to change. And I agree that the whole concept of school choice needs to change. Remember, legislators did it, not school people. The other, so that's, that's my comment.
Dave, I appreciate your comments. As I said, I found out about this about a week ago. I blame myself for not finding out about this 20 years ago. But I wanted to bring it to town meeting, because as you brought up, the issue of the lack of transparency, it's my job to look out for and speak as both a select board and a private citizen when I feel that we are spending money in an inappropriate way. So, that's what I'm doing. And I know $5,400 is not enough. I'm just bringing out how much money it costs to transport each of these choice children from Pittsfield or Lee or Lennox or Great Barrington. And I'm very curious as why an activity bus doesn't bring kids to the school, drop them off at the school, and that's it, why it stops at Our Lady, and then why it makes three different stops or four different stops in Great Barrington. I wish I'd been on top of this ahead of time, but I wanted to bring it to town voters. So, I'm just kind of watching out for money. If you don't approve of it, then don't vote for it.
Okay. Dennis.
Dennis Sears. And everyone should be aware that I am also a member of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee. Basically, it's a shame that we're having this discussion, because I think this discussion is being brought forth more by the bus vendor that we currently have, who we do not, at this time, have a contract with. And basically, this has become a rather stormy issue, that the fact that we have not accepted their contract and have asked them to rebid. And I think that there's some local politics that have gotten involved in this, that, look, we know how many buses we need to be able to run the school district. And, you know, if we could get by with two less, we'd obviously get by with two less. And basically, I think it's very unfortunate, and I hope that it does not impact, basically, the approval of the budget as it was put forth, which represented an awful lot of work by a lot of people to, you know, keep it at that minor increase of less than 5% that we have this year, in a year when other districts are going up maybe 15 to 20%. So, I, I'm very upset to see that, you know, that the local politics have come into play involving a vendor and the, and the school committee. Thank you.
All right. I heard...
All right, I heard a motion and a second. Go ahead, Jess.
I'm Jesse Carpenter, 1700 Ewan Street. I've worked in this school district for 24 years. I graduated from high school here, and I'm currently the Mount Everett principal. I just want to make one point. You know, I think our school district has done a good job trying to meet the needs of the families and the students. When kids school choice in, they become part of our community here at the school. And like any other student here, we've provided transportation in a way to help the families. The Activity Bus works in the same way, and we have some kids at the secondary level, grade six through 12, who would get on the Activities Bus to get to some of those points in Great Barrington for things like after-school jobs, for opportunities that they can get like tutoring, or for programs that run in Great Barrington. And I think it's really important that we continue to provide those to families, whether they live in the district or not. Once they enroll here, they're part of our school community. And, you know, just to add on to the point that Mr. Sears just made, the budget increase is relatively small considering inflation, and I think that it would be wise for us to move forward in that direction. Thank you.
Bonnie Silvers, 15 Bow Wow Road. Marsha, I took my mask off. A few things. One...
Bonnie?
Yes.
Can you face the front?
What about every, all right, I'll do it this way.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, the population, whatever. I will try to address it this way. One, you should know, as opposed to every other district, we are facing a 30 percent increase from the bus company. We are the victims of having a monopoly. We went out to bid through the, I'm also on the school committee here, I forgot to mention, we went out to bid more than once. Messini came back to us with the same numbers. We have a list, and fortunately, our superintendent is here as well as our finance department. We received the same 30 percent, and we were put in a position of being told, no, we will not even stagger the payments. Other districts are getting 3 percent increases, 5 percent increases. Our superintendent called out the counting. We are victim of a monopoly and somebody who is not being a good corporate, in my opinion, citizen. The other issue is in terms of those buses. That decision was made a few years ago, and we benefit financially from those students. The number of choice in is way more than double the 35. The students who come bring us more money than we spend. In making the decision on the bus that stops at Our Lady of the Valley, it was a way for us to cut the costs and not have more buses, and the objective is we've been able to keep more children in the district. Parents are able to pick up their children at places of work, and I've seen that when I've been in the Big Y parking lot and you see our kids getting off. It makes it convenient for families who work. We try to accommodate their needs, and this is a simple way for us not to lose our own children where parents could be working in Lennox, in Great Barrington, in Stockbridge, and say, hey, maybe I should send my kid to Berkshire Hills that's closer. We're saying, you stay in Southern Berkshire Regional School District, and this is the accommodation. So not only is it school choice, it's our kids. Financially, we come out way ahead because of those buses. And the big issue in terms of transportation is that we have become victims of one company that is giving us a price, and you could go through and do Central Berkshire, Lee, Lennox, you will, I could keep on going. They are not paying what we're being asked to pay, and nobody will come in and bid against him. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
I'd like to say so.
Okay.
I don't think demonizing local families and businesses is the way to go with this, and the point made by Renee is a legitimate one, but we do not have time to hash this out in this form. So I would recommend we pass Article Three, and that this takes a more proper way and just an easier path and a more full discussion than right here at annual meeting at this hour. So I recommend we pass Article Three.
Marie.
Marie Messini Reynolds, 115 Pike Road West, also Vice President Messini Bus Company. I take extreme offense to the comments that were just made. The bid price that was submitted was based on the school district's specifications. That's how we come up with our price. The Messini Bus Company had the same pricing for Berkshire Hills, the same increase, which was understood based on the costs that we are incurring. Southern Berkshire, every time there's a bid, comes out on attack against the bus company. In your specifications, you can reject or accept any bid. Go ahead and reject it.
Any other discussion? No. I think next year I'm going to ask for $25 more. So I heard Renee made a motion for, to amend...
We have a motion on the floor to approve the budget, a yes or no vote. The suggestion was made for a negative motion, but that will be accomplished by a no vote on the main motion.
All right, so we'll just handle this the normal way. Whatever that is. All right, let me get my timer out here. So we're ready to vote? On approval of the Article Number Three, the transportation budget, $7,512,518.
It's the whole budget, Bill.
What one?
It's the whole.
The whole school budget.
Article Three.
Yeah, Article Three, that's what I'm reading. Okay, so, just to be clear, because I don't want to come back, we're voting on Article Three. It's to see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal 2023, and to vote to raise appropriate $7,512,518 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget. Okay? Let's vote. Okay.
Sorry. I have to close polling. Polling is closed, 78 percent.
78 percent, approved by majority. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt for fiscal year 2023, and vote to raise and appropriate $145,618 to pay the town's assessed share of that debt, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt for fiscal year 2023, and to vote to raise and appropriate $145,618 to pay for the town's assessed share of that budget.
Second.
Let me have a second. I see no discussion? So let's vote. Are we ready?
We are.
You ready, Martin? Okay, let's vote. We approve, 93 percent, majority. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2023, and vote to raise and appropriate $145,090 to pay for the town's assessed share of that budget, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2023, and to vote to raise and appropriate $145,090 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Are we ready to vote? Martin? Okay, let's vote. And the results is 90 percent approved. Motion passed. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $40,000 to pay for vocational education tuition in fiscal year 2023, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $40,000 to pay for vocational education tuition fiscal year 2023.
Second.
We have a second. I see no discussion? Okay, let's vote. Are we ready, Martin? Okay, vote. All right. Motion passes, 97 percent. If it keeps up like this, I'm going to rescind my request for 25 extra dollars. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or end or transfer from available funds $140,910 for the disposable and management of solid waste, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action to effectuate the purpose of the article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I have a different number on this article. So am I agreed to go with my number? On my motion? Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move to raise from solid waste disposal enterprise fund reserves $150,300 for the disposal and management of solid waste, and to authorize the Select Board to take any action to effectuate the proposed purpose of this article, including but not limited to the entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. And the results are 89 percent approved. Motion passed. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter 90 of the general laws to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of town ways and bridges, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter 90 of the general laws to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of town ways and bridges.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's get ready to vote. Okay, vote. Article Eight approved, 93 percent. Motion passed. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the appointment of members of the Board of Selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 28A, Section 21A of the general laws, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the appointment of members of the Select, Board of Selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 268A, Section 21A of the general laws.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All right.
Can someone give an example of what that might be?
What was that question?
Like an example?
Well, what's it mean?
So that means that the Select, one of the members of the Select Board could serve on the Conservation, on the Board of Health, on any board where there may be a vacancy. But if any of those boards were paid positions, there would be no additional compensation.
I would just recommend that somehow it be publicized that, you know, people are needed to take over certain positions instead of overburdening, for example, the Selectmen, whoever, to be able to take on multiple positions. Sometimes I see an appointment is made, maybe it's on the website and I have to continue to check that. I know you have a little bulletin board outside that I take a look at every once in a while, but there's got to be a way to communicate to the public that particular positions are open and available, and then you can request maybe being put on those particular committees if you send an appropriate letter or what have you. Thank you.
So we do have it on the website, all of the openings. It's now coming up on appointment season, so the Selectmen will be discussing them at their next few meetings on all the open positions and who has applied. And when there is a vacancy, we also publicize that at a Selectmen's meeting and ask for letters of interest.
Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, approved, 78 percent. Motion passed. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and Perk Test Wellness for septic system inspections and sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with general law, Chapter 28A, Section 21A for fiscal year 2023, and to set the salary for those positions at $40 per Title V inspections and $100 per Perk Tests in accordance... dollars per Title V inspections and a hundred dollars per perk test in accordance with the provisions of general law, chapter forty-one, section four A, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and Perk Test Witnesses for septic system inspections, sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with general law, chapter two-sixty-eight A, section twenty-one A for fiscal year 2023, to set the salary for those positions at forty dollars per Title V inspection and a hundred dollars per perk test in accordance with the provisions of general law, chapter forty-one, section four A.
We have a second. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article ten passes eighty-nine percent to ten. Mark, motion passed. Article eleven. We are one-third of the way there. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell with the approval of the Board of Selectmen any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be required through the foreclosure of tax title or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell with the approval of the Select Board any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be acquired through the foreclosure and tax title.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article passes eighty-nine percent. Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, appropriate or transfer from available funds seventy-seven thousand dollars provided for extraordinary un- or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of chapter forty, section six of the general laws known as the Reserve Fund or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer seventy-seven thousand dollars from free cash to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of chapter forty, section six of the general laws known as the Reserve Fund.
Got a second, any discussion?
Did we not have a motion such as this at the most recent town meeting? And if so, what's the difference between the two?
So, at this special town meeting, there was a motion to fund the Reserve Fund for money that had been spent. So, in the current fiscal year, we had to use the Reserve Fund and Finance approved a fifty thousand dollar expenditure. So, we asked voters to put that back to get us through to the end of June. If that money is not used, it closes out again to free cash. What you're voting on tonight will be for the next fiscal year.
How did you come up with the figure seventy-seven thousand? And, and give me some more for instances on what it's been used for in the past.
So, it's been seventy-seven thousand for the last two years. The year before, we had extra free cash, so we put money, extra money in there just in case we needed it. This could be used for, a perfect example for the upcoming fiscal year will be energy. Nobody knows where those costs are gonna go. We've increased the energy budget that you saw in article one, but if costs go beyond that and we don't have enough in there, this would be an instance that we would go to the Finance Committee and ask them for some money to cover the budget that might have gone over.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? Let me get my timer here, come on. Let's vote. Time. Motion passes. Article thirteen. To see, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds seven hundred and fifty dollars to emergency response fund or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer seven hundred and fifty dollars from free cash for the emergency response fund.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article thirteen passes ninety-four percent. Article fourteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to compensate firefighters for training or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to compensate firefighters for training.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article fourteen passes. Ninety-four percent. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for financial services, including but not limited to audits or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for financial services.
Got a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article passes eighty-eight percent. Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of general law, chapter forty-four, fifty-three E and a half, as most recently amended, to establish fiscal year 2023 spending limits for the revolving funds as set for below in the chart in the warrant or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve this article as written in the warrant.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article passes. Article seventeen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds for five thousand four hundred dollars for Rest of River legal expenses or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer fifty-four hundred dollars from free cash to Rest of River legal fees.
Got a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article seventeen passes eighty-one percent. Article eighteen. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of eighteen thousand dollars from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs and repairs at the transfer station, including any incidental and related costs or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of eighteen thousand dollars from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs and/or repairs at the transfer station, including any incidental or and related cost.
You got a second, any discussion?
I'm not sure if that's enough money. I mean, last year, I believe the recycling station was down for quite an extended period of time because of a motor-related issue in terms of what needed to take place. You probably had to take some of that money out or whatever, free cash or whatever you, you know, you need to. So, I'm wondering, is this a sufficient amount?
I believe it is sufficient enough. Last year, the problem with the motor was not a financial problem, it was getting the part problem.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article eighteen passes with ninety-three percent. Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds two hundred thousand dollars for the purchase and equipping of a loader for the Highway Department, including any incidental and related costs or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of a loader.
Second. You got a second, any discussion?
Quick amendment to purchase and equip.
Second. Got a second. Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article nineteen passes with eighty-eight percent. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds thirty thousand dollars for the purchase and equipment of a tractor for the Highway Department, including any incidental and related costs or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer thirty thousand from free cash for the purchase and equipment of a tractor.
Got a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article twenty passes eighty-eight percent. Article twenty-one. We are two-thirds of the way through. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds seven thousand five hundred dollars for repairs to the town-owned cemeteries, including any incidental and related costs or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer seventy-five hundred dollars from free cash for cemetery repairs.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Okay, article twenty-one passes with ninety-three percent. Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to sum of a hundred and six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for the third year payment of a fire truck lease purchase financing agreement or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars from free cash for the third year payment of the fire truck lease purchase financing agreement.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article twenty-two passes ninety-three percent. Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds a hundred thousand dollars to the fire truck stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from free cash into the fire truck stabilization fund.
Got a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article twenty-three passes ninety-one percent. Article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds one hundred thousand dollars to the General Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from free cash and to the General Stabilization Fund.
Second. Got a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article twenty-four passes eighty-four percent. Article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds fifty-five thousand dollars for town building repairs, improvements, equipment, and furnishings to include but not limited to the town hall, library, senior center, and police station, including any design and other costs and expenses incidental and related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer fifty-five thousand dollars from free cash for town building repairs. As written in the article.
Do I have a second? Okay. Have a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Time. Article twenty-five passes with eighty-nine percent. Article twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds ten thousand dollars to purchase information, technology, hardware, software, and services, including any incidental or related costs, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action effectuate to, to effectuate the purpose of the article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer ten thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of technology, information, hardware, software, and services as written in the article. information, hardware, software, and services as written in the article.
Second. Got a second. We have some discussion.
I have a question. Is this the total budget for all information, technology, hardware, software, and the like for all parts of the town, the library, the senior center, town hall, the police station?
Yes, Lou, it is. There is, there are some funds left over from last year that will be added to this. So it's a little bit more than $10,000 that we have set aside for that purpose.
So then my comment is that it's just hard to fathom that $10,000 is sufficient for all of this. I mean, we have an information technology system that is needed, we have a geographical information system that's needed, we have new hardware that's needed, we have updates in in software. $10,000 seems like just such a piddling amount.
We have most of the equipment on a rotating basis, so they're not all getting replaced all at once on the same year, so which helps the cost that way as well.
Will the internet zooming feature be improved with this? I know with the planning board being in there and being on Zoom, a lot of times the connection is dropped in the town hall.
This does not have anything to do with the connection, the internet connection, that's straight from the cable company, that's something that we cannot control.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article 26 passes 90%. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds $250,000 for police department building repairs, improvements, equipping, and furnishing, including any design and other costs and expenses incidental to relative and related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $250,000 from free cash for repairs to the police station, the police department as written in the article.
Second. We got a second, we have discussion.
Just a question as to whether there are any applications that were done either on the state or federal level to obtain funding to cover this, these expenses.
We did have a grant for some of the improvement at the police department that was denied.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article 27 passes 73%. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $40,000 for guardrail replacements, including any incidental and related costs, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $40,000 from free cash for guardrail replacement as written in the article.
Second. Got a second, any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article 28 passes with 85%. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $5,600 for the purchase and installation of a welcome to Sheffield sign for the village green, including any incidental and related costs, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer $5,600 from free cash for the installation of a welcome sign in the village green.
Second. We have a second, okay, any discussion?
Where is that sign going to be located? Because Sheffield starts at the Connecticut line and ends at Great Barrington. One sign on the village green, what good is that going to be? And what's it going to be made of? That's an awful lot of money for one sign.
This sign. This sign was brought to us by the Sheffield Beautification Committee, which is not a formal appointed committee, it's an individual group of people. And we felt on the select board that we did not want to approve this sign without voter approval. Is there anyone here from that group to talk about this sign?
I'm not from the group, but I'm supportive of it. Sheffield is the oldest town in Berkshire County with lots of history. It's a very attractive town, and I believe it was the committee's intent that there be an attractively designed carved, I think it's carved, signs visible from both directions, which would be placed somewhere on the green, and this place has actually been approved by the Department of Transportation. And the idea was to bring some attention to the very center of town and to show us off, because we've got a lot to offer.
Kathy Starapoli, 85, Plannetta Way, and I'm, I'm part of the group that proposed this sign. It's going to be made by gee signs. It's a wooden painted sign with the carved, you know, that they do, the carved lettering. It's double-sided. It will be on the village green. It's already been approved by Mass DOT. They were very specific about the location. And the proposed phrasing would be Sheffield with our date and where the Berkshires began. Okay?
Jenny Russell, Berkshire School Road. Gracious as I am, and I love to invite people to this and that, I just wonder about the busyness of signs. I'm about to put one up in a couple of weeks myself, but I just wonder about the placement of it. The thing that drives me nuts when I walk or when I stand in the front of the post office is the speed, this is Eric's purview I know, at which people endlessly go through town. One more distraction might be just one too many. And I just wonder about the size, shape, placement, and all the other peripheral signs.
From what I could tell from the sketch and the drawing and the placement that the DOT did approve, it shouldn't involve any problem sight lines. It looked very attractive. And I think all those considerations have pretty much been addressed. And I, I really do think, even though it is a large amount of money, it is appropriate for Sheffield to have a welcoming sign.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article 29 passes with 76%. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article 4 of the special town meeting held on April 4, 2022, to delete from there, to delete from therefrom, the authorization to appropriate up to $1,700 from the PEG access and cable-related special revenue fund, and to instead appropriate the sum of $1,600 to be expended under the direction of the select board for such PEG access services. This clarifying the amount of the appropriation authorized thereunder, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the vote taken under Article 4 of the special town meeting held on April 4, 2022, to delete from their, from the, the authorization to appropriate up to $1,700 from the PEG access and cable-related special revenue fund, and to instead appropriate $1,600 to be expended under the direction of the select board for such PEG access services, thus clarifying the amount of the appropriation authorized thereunder.
Second. Got a second, any discussion? Yes.
I just want to clarify why we're doing this. As I stated in the warrant, at the special town meeting, you approved setting up the fund, and there was an approval of up to $1,700, when it really should be an exact appropriation of $1,600.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Time. Article 30 passes 88%. Before I read Article 31, our last one, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And we got a lot done with the 31 articles. We had some robust conversation, I guess is the right word. It was all positive, so I really appreciate that. Okay, Article 31, to see if the town will vote to transfer to sum of 7 million, no, 7,000. To see, let me start again. To see if the town will vote to transfer to sum of $7,314.34 from the solid waste enterprise fund, free cash to the solid waste enterprise budget to pay a fiscal year 2021 invoice for disposal of recycling materials from the transfer station, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over this article.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, we have Renee, or not Renee.
Oh, I'm going to give you an explanation on why we passed over this article. In the year, the fiscal year 21, the bottom kind of dropped out of recycling. So rather than receiving checks for the recycling that we took to the recycling center, we began having to pay for them to take those recycling. So there is a deficit in the FY21 transfer station budget, but it's not the result of one invoice. After talking with the accountants, we need to reword the article. You will be seeing this again to cover that deficit, but it'll be appropriately written at that time.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, for the last time, let's vote. Oh, we moved on. Okay, we're good, we're golden. We have to vote on. Okay, so we have to vote on. That's what I thought. Okay, let's vote.
I'm sorry, we're not sure what we're voting on at this point.
It's to ignore Article 31.
I'll give everyone an extra five seconds. Okay, time. Passes 91%. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Good night.